This is a regular school board meeting of the School Board Trustees of School City of Chicago, and the time now is 7:00 o'clock. The place is School City of Chicago Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street, East Chicago, Indiana, and this meeting is being recorded. Okay. Now we will go...oh, I'm sorry. This meeting is...this school board meeting is conducted to the school corporation's business and not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez. Trustee Smith. Trustee Rodriguez.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Madam President, give some key.
Present. Well, we don't have the present...I mean, okay. So, present.
Uh huh. Oh, yes. You're not coming.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the dismal with liberty and justice for all. Our mission statement is by Dr. Burnet.
Good evening, School Board. The school city of East Chicago educates and empowers every student through aligned instruction, meaningful partnerships, and differentiated practices to ensure success in life, college, career, and civic engagement.
Finish. Now, 1.04 certification, no exec session, Indiana code 5-14-1.5-6.1. Approve of the agenda?
Madam Secretary...Madam President, I make a motion to approve the item number two, agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez, second by Trustee Taylor. Now we have our administrative report from Dr. Burnet.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Trustee Rodriguez. This is on approval agenda, right?
Yes, he's...yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, give some key.
Yes. Now we have our administrator's report from Dr. Burnet.
Thank you. Before I do my typical report, I want us to become a regular practice since we have a newly adopted strategic plan for the 2025-2030 school year. Part of that strategic plan, that vision, was that we will provide the board regular updates on our progress toward achieving those goals. We will have an annual report of the strategic plan, but we also said in our design that we will have quarterly updates. So this will be the first quarter update of our strategic plan. It will cover the beginning of the school year. This is a high-level overview and is just a brief update, part of what you'll see again when we do our annual report.
Thank you, Dr. Burnet.
Oh, I'm...
I'm sorry.
Once again, our school mission, if you recall that part of our strategic plan, we refreshed and revised our mission statement. Our goal this year was that our mission statement is throughout and published throughout the entire school city, in classrooms, as well as every presentation at the district and the school level. Similarly, our vision has also been revised as a result of the new strategic plan. It also accompanies the mission, published in every classroom and throughout the school city. I want to remind the board of our five strategic focus areas. Academic support system, behavioral, emotional, and social supports, career pathways, family and community engagement, and staff relations and professional learning. I will take just a very few minutes to go over where we've started progress in each of these focus areas. Our goal for academic support system, and I am going to take a little bit of time in just as the strategic plan is still new to the board and the community, for us to become ingrained in the goals, as you can see, there are some things we've started doing in order to align everything that we say and do with our strategic plan. So we have put the goal and numbers on our agenda items so that we are connecting everything that we vote on and make decisions, how they align with the strategic plan. Our academic support systems, S C E C, will implement a district-wide system of academic supports to ensure all students receive high-quality instruction aligned to grade-level standards with regular monitoring of progress using multiple forms of assessment. Excellent. So some of the activities we've done so far, and once again, this is just a snapshot, is we have expanded the use of S T math, which is spatial-temporal math. It was a program that was used with our special needs students or special education students, and we've expanded that to offer layer supports to other students, to provide a foundational for math and to get them more successful, to be proficient on grade level. And we've also implemented this year Magic School, which is our AI-powered teaching platform that allows teachers to do lesson planning, provide differentiated instruction, small grouping. So that is new as an academic support system, but it is aligned with our strategic plan in terms of what it does to help student outcomes. Our next slide. S C E C will establish structured supports to promote positive student behavior, emotional well-being, and school connectedness by providing access to school-based services, clear behavioral expectations, and regular staff training. Our next slide. Here we want to focus on P B I S rewards. So you will see them color-coded. Red means we have not started it yet. Yellow means we have started, and green will be is completed. So right now you'll see lots of yellow and lots of red as we start our...the first quarter of our five-year plan. We already have P B I S. We have...we use it in all of our elementary buildings and in our high schools and secondary buildings, but P B I S rewards, we're trying to maximize, and that is specifically a platform that helps support monitoring and tracking our positive behavior interventions and Career pathways. S C E C will increase student access to college and career readiness experiences by expanding career-focused programs, both secondary partnerships, and career planning, beginning in the middle grades. You have heard us mention about what we're doing with Project Lead the Way, and that we have a number of teachers who've been trained now in the elementary buildings. Those training of those staff members is critical in order for us to have this foundation to prepare students for careers in STEM at the middle and high school. We have also launched School Links. That is also a college and career planning path...platform. It is new in terms of now we're going to start to maximize, how do we get kids to know what they want to do? How do we plan for those pathways and programs? And so part of that is the initial work we're doing with launching School Links. Our next slide. Oh, you can skip that one. Family and community engagement. S C E C will strengthen relations with families in the broader community by improving communication, increasing participation in school activities, and building consistent opportunities for collaboration. And let's see where we are in terms of our stages of our first quarter. Here we've just tracked the number of opportunities we've had where we've had a number of family and community engagement opportunities. So if the board recalls, I've had town halls at every school, and the purpose of those town halls was to introduce the community to the strategic plan. We have had open house, parent-teacher conferences, but in addition to those instructional opportunities, we've had a number of parent meetings, both with our bilingual parents as well as with our exceptional learners. We've also had Hispanic Heritage Month family engagement nights. We've had the meet the superintendent at McDonald's. We've had trunk or treats at some of our schools and other Halloween activities. And in the athletic side, we've engaged our family and community through our athletic events, specifically through our biddy ball program as well as our elementary girls volleyball S C E C will improve staff relations and strengthen instructional capacity by providing structured professional learning, clear look communication, and opportunities for collaboration, mentorship, and career growth. So I want to first start off by identifying that we have this year have moved away from the hour Wednesdays after school to have a more concentrated time professional learning for our district. We've had an October 15 Professional Learning Day. Our next one is this Wednesday, and what it does is allow us to have a little bit more deep time to work on some of those topics that we seem to be rushed through when we only have an hour after school every week. But this is in the infancy stages. We will have more tiered professional learning experiences as we make realize what is our goal for staff relations and professional learning. All of our staff have been trained on P B I S, which is part of the segue of getting sure everyone's trained before we implement P B I S rewards. And then I do want to call out that our administrators, this year we are learning together, not just our directors and our principals, but this year we've invited our assistant principals to professional learning with...so they're learning with their building leaders, and they attend our monthly leaders' learning. We are still covering this as our professional reading text, Ten Mind Frames for Leaders. It's the Visible Learning Approach to School Success, and not...and so the principals and the directors are facilitating the book discussion. So we are using our internal capacity to build up those facilitation muscles of our leaders to, once again, facilitate the learning for their colleagues. And here are our next steps at the end of quarter one as we approach quarter two, actually we're in quarter two. So we are still exploring a strategic plan alignment assessment. You'll see that on the board agenda for tonight, which is the Infinity Program. And we also need to start exploring, how do we now capture...right now our data is on the website, our strategic plan has a dedicated page, but we need to explore what our reporting platform is going to be so that our community members can look and see all of our goals, look and see our activities, and be able to see the greens, the yellows, and the reds. That is the only way we start to make the strategic plan a living and breathing document. It can't be something we only talk about once a year or we only talk about...it has to be always in front of our face, and we have to incorporate it every day that we say and we do. And then finally, we're working on a strategic plan update for quarter two already, where we anticipate now having some metrics that we can start monitoring now that we've established our first quarter. And that is one portion of my superintendent's report. I do want to call out that the S C E C members of Girls on the Run attended the end of the season with a celebratory 5K on Saturday, November 1st, 2025, at Valparaiso University. And according to Girls on the Run, this closing event gives programs' participants of all abilities a tangible sense of accomplishment. Crossing the finish line instills confidence through completion, and it's a joyful moment program participants always remember. Everyone in the 5K receives a commemorative medal to celebrate this incredible achievement. So we want to give all of our students who participated in Girls on the Run, as well as our coaches, a round of applause. Last week was National School Psychologists Week. We paused to recognize our school psychologists, Crystal Montemeyer-Guerra, Catherine Burcullin, as well as those, our school psychologists through our educational partnership with Jelani Educational Services, Damian Antoine, and Shemel Goins. Let's give our Nash, our school psychologists, a round of applause. We want to congratulate Harrison Elementary School. They are the 2025 elementary girls volleyball champions. And I believe it's the third year in a row?
Yes.
Okay, they are three Peters. Okay. And finally, our community engagement. S C E C hosted the informational meeting for the Lake County Alliance of Black School Educators last Wednesday, where educators from five Northwest Indiana school corporations gathered to create a local affiliate chapter for the National Alliance of Black School Educators, or N A P C. And that concludes my superintendent's report. Madam President.
Well, thank you, Dr. Burnet. So now we'll go into our consent agenda. Are there any questions from the audience? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item four.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item four, Consent Agenda.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now we go into our new business. 5.01, Approve of Proposal for Infinity Systems Strategic Plan and Alignment Assessment. Any questions from the audience? Is there a motion to approve?
Madam President, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the board?
Just have one question.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
Looking at the contract, I noticed that, that the amount was a little high in terms of just overseeing a strategic plan that we just already approved. I guess my question is, is have there been any discussion as to what, what's the additional role and responsibility of the consultant for Infinity?
So I can address that, trustee Rodriguez. So the, this effort to align and have established baseline data specific for our strategic plan is probably one of the more cost-effective partner solutions in the industry. There are a number of other platforms, such as the one I mentioned earlier, that we do need to find a platform that is probably a little more costly than this one. But this does monitor, this does create and design the assessment, as well as provide us data from the assessment to use for beginning, middle, and baseline data.
Thank you.
Trustee Taylor, do you have any comments?
No.
Got a comment. I want to ask Ms. Randolph, you asked about a company that we still have doing the same type of planning here. What was the name of the company that you asked the question about?
Panorama.
Yeah, Panorama. So did you get your answer? Do we have that company?
No, I asked questions, but you got that answer.
Yeah, but that's on Bonato.
Yes. Yes, we still do use Panorama. Panorama is slightly different from Infinity Systems. Panorama captures student data of perceptions of how they feel connected or belonging, specifically from the student lens. We do that for all of our students, and we do also use Panorama for our staff. So Infinity Systems will, but I'm sorry, one other thing regarding Panorama. Panorama does not cover all of the items we need to be covered in our strategic plan in terms of alignment. So we can take Panorama, we can identify certain questions that addresses one of the priority focus areas or a core value, whereas Infinity System is designed specifically to address all of our core values as well as our goal areas. Also, Panorama is a, a much broader survey, meaning broad means it covers a number of other issues besides, or topics besides specifically our gen, our strategic plan items.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Rodriguez?
No.
Trustee Taylor?
No.
Madam President, Gibson King.
No. Excuse me, is he on the screen, Mr.? Is he on the screen?
Oh.
Jesse's on the screen. Are you on the screen now, Jesse? Yeah, he's on the screen.
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
I, I just, for somebody, I've been on for about 15 minutes. I just, she was able to hear the last few minutes. My vote's no.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee.
Just let the record reflect that trustee Gomez has joined the meeting.
Did you hear that? I mean, Ms. Bishop. Okay, so now we go to, um...
Okay.
Now we go to 5.02. Approve of Data Sharing Agreement Graduation Alliance. Can I get a, any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 5.02?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve item 5.02, Approval of Data Sharing Agreement Graduation Alliance.
Motion made by trustee Taylor.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam President?
Yes, trustee Gomez.
Yes, I could get a brief overview of this. I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't have my gender directory for them.
Yes, from Dr. Borne.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Doing an overall of this year.
Yeah, so Graduation Alliance is a, of educational solution to address or to recover students who have dropped out, and it does two things. It allows them to, it tracks them down, and it sees if they have matriculated or graduated from another school district. They get that data back to us, and if they have not graduated, offers them an opportunity to get a high school diploma through their curriculum or their program. And the data we get back allows us to, in retrospect, clean up our data in terms of our graduation rate. So we lose some students between freshman year and senior year. We now have identified them, and we can correct that information with the state.
Okay, so those, those, those students will be reflected on our count?
No, they won't, they won't record having their diploma from us. All it does is if we find a student who's moved to Iowa, we now know where they are, and then we can say, this student is in Iowa, so it reduces the unaccounted student we typically have.
Great, okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board? Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
Superintendent Borne, what's the cost of this?
So Graduation Alliance is no cost to the board. We are approving the data sharing agreement, which allows us to share the names of dropouts or students unaccounted for with the organization.
Thank you.
So in order for you to share this data, do you have to get permission from parents? Or how would you get this, share this data with these, with this agency if they dropped out?
So they, we share the, the names of students, and they track them down. So when, yeah, so we don't do anything else after we give them the names of the students. And they have enrollment counselors who's, who act on behalf of Graduation Alliance who reach out to families, and if they're successful, they say, you're a student who was recently, previously enrolled with Schools to be Chicago, have, what are your current, you know, are you graduated? And so after that, they follow up with them.
Okay. Madam Secretary, roll call, please. I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Bishop. Any questions from, any questions from the audience?
How does that benefit our students?
You want to get up to the mic, please? Yeah, thank you.
I didn't want those mic.
Oh, that's okay.
I, I just want to know, how does that benefit our students? I think we have to be careful with sharing information about our students, and how much have you looked into that actual program? And how, how do we want to help them? I think that it would benefit them more if we find, okay, but you're just referring to students who have, may have left the state of Indiana, perhaps? Or just any of our students who have dropped out?
Yeah, any students who've dropped out.
Okay, because you know, we do have programs locally that could support them to get their high school diplomas. It does, it didn't, I didn't hear that it says that they would help them to receive their high school diploma. So how is it benefiting our students and our community?
They put them, they put them in a program where they earn their high school diploma.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so where? What is, where, where's that located or what kind of program is? Because we do have some programs. We have Adult Basic Ed through CWI and Work One, some services that would refer them to CWI. So what program is that, that?
Yes, thank you. American Academy is their program that they use that graduates students through.
Okay, so it's like an online program? Okay, I just thought we could probably look into some things that are local, you know, that from Northwest Indiana too, you know, because there are programs like that, though. Anyway, I'll just do some research on that. Yeah, I don't have all the information.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Linda Randolph, one of my questions was that, once they find them, then are the children obligated to get the GED or whatever from them, or will they be able to go elsewhere? That was one of my questions. And I think that it's good to have some help, because I remember when I first retired and started helping out, I was searching for our students in Chicago with my contacts, because you have to understand, unless, unless the rules change, if they are on your roll and they leave here, if you don't find them, they still belong to you. Everything they are, everything they aren't, they belong to you, and it goes down as really just a negative. So it's great to have some agency that's going to help with that. I was just wondering, like, Ms. Bishop, just how much flexibility is there? You know, once they find a student, do they tell you they found them? If they enroll with them, or will they tell you anyway? So I think too hard, but that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, I believe that's in the report that they share with us, that they've located a student and their current whereabouts, meaning have they graduated? And if they have graduated, they report that back to us. And if they have not graduated, they'll say, we offered them our program, and if they take, then they say, and we graduated them.
Yeah, but my question is, our CTE program, don't we have GED? Supposedly have it, but what's going on with that program? Because we never get any.
So, so remember, this is a layer of support. This is for the students whom we don't know where they are. We, if we know where the students are, we offer GED and our Adult Basic Ed, and that's offered to other students in the community. This allows even students who may be out of that, that range of being able to, like, if they're older than 22, then they can address, Graduation Alliance will support them in that effort. But this, once again, this doesn't replace what we currently offer. This is additional exit.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. We go to approval of the ESS addendum, the Nurses and Academic Support System. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 5.03?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 5.04, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement.
No, 03.
I'm sorry, 5.03?
Yes.
Did y'all vote on 5.02?
ESS?
No, we talked about it in the work session.
Okay, 5.03, Approval of ESS Addendum.
I'm sorry, Madam President?
Yes.
Point of order, did we vote on 5.02?
Yeah, we did.
We did?
Yeah, just now.
Okay. Oops.
Yeah, we did.
5.03, Madam President, make a motion to approve.
Approve, approve, approve by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. So I just want to get a clear understanding that we will find out if this is a six-month contract, right?
Yes, Madam President, I think the direction was to confirm that the main ESS contract, which this is an addendum to, is for six months, and that the addendum would follow.
Yeah, for six months.
Yeah, for six months.
Yes, for six months only.
Yep, I'll confirm that.
So we need to just change that. Yes, okay.
Madam President, I, I have one quick question. So does that mean that the nurses we have employed right now have to do the same process that our substitutes did? No? Okay.
If I may clarify, so this is only if a nurse resigns, and we need a nurse to fill in while we find another nurse.
Okay, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
No.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. We go to 5.04, Approve of Collecting Bargain Agreement with E Chicago Federation Teachers Local 511. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion? 5.04.
Madam President, make a motion to approve 5.04, Approval of Collective Bargain Agreement with Schools to be Chicago Federation of Teachers Local 511.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Madam Sec, uh, any, any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
President? Madam President, I did have a question.
Yes, pardon.
I, I know that there were some changes that were made to the contract.
Yes.
From our last meeting. Have those all been incorporated into this?
Yes, we asked Mr. Gallagher that before he left, so they were all incorporated.
And is the, I can't remember which section of, but regarding the, okay, evaluation? Is the current contract under consideration? Just have that they had evaluation, or do they have to be effective, highly effective?
So I'm going to let the union rep Helen Steinbach answer that for you, Jesse, okay? She's going to go to the mic.
Thank you.
Because the state law no longer requires that teachers have to be rated effective or highly effective to receive a raise, that part was removed. And so the only requirement is that they have an evaluation from last year and that they worked 120 days or more.
Did you hear that, trustee Gomez?
Yes, I did. I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but that's, that's fine.
Thank you, Helen. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Approve of memorandum, oh, okay, 5.06, Approve of Professional Development Requests. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Approve of Memorandum of Understanding with Indiana University Northwest Student Teaching Academic Support System. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 5.05?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 5.05, Approval Memorandum of Understanding with Indiana University Northwest for Student Teaching.
Motion made by trustee Taylor.
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Just madam president's point of order. I don't believe there was any questions asked in the audience.
Pardon? From the audience? Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions from the audience on 5.05? Approve of Memorandum of Understanding with Indiana.
I think there is a question.
Yes.
Explain to me what they mean.
It's 5.05. Yes, explain that, Dr. Borne.
This is a memorandum of understanding. We actually have a number on file with some of our other partner universities. It just allows us to have student teachers from the university, and it grants them access, it grants us access to student teachers, and students to be placed within our school
Yeah, go ahead.
When you guys do this, it allows you guys to use them as temporary teachers, like to send in guests whenever you guys don't have a teacher, or?
No. No, no. These are strictly student teachers. They're in a classroom with a fully licensed teacher, and they are learning how to be a teacher before they begin their own classroom.
And we have this agreement with them for four years, right, Dr. Borne?
That's correct.
Are there any more questions from the audience? No, I didn't say it was.
She said agreement.
She said we have the agreement for four years.
Four years, the agreement, yes. So now, now, are there any questions from the board?
Madam President, I do have one question with the judge.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
Is, is this also accredited? Is, is this also accredited type of class that the university teacher be teaching our students?
You mean, is the university accredited or?
Well, I know the university is, but say for, if, does a student receive college credits?
Correct.
With regards to.
So part of their graduation requirements is to, that's why they're with a fully licensed certified teacher, which allows them to get the credit.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Now we go to 5.06, Approval of Professional Development Requests. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 5.06, Approval of Professional Development Requests?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 5.06, Approval of Professional Development Request.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the audience, I mean, from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yeah, yes. Approval, okay, okay, now, 5.07, Approval Personnel Report. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 5.07?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 5.07, Approval Personnel Report.
Motion made by Trustee Taylor.
Second.
Second by Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Gomez?
He appears to be froze on the screen.
No.
Okay.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
No. 5.08, Approval of Superintendent's Goals for 2025-26 School Year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get approval for 5.08? Motion for 5.08, Approval Superintendent's Goals for 2025-26 School Year.
Madam President, make a motion to approve 5.08, Approval of Superintendent's Goals for the 2025-26 School Year.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Taylor. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Now we go into our public forum. Mr. Harris?
Yes, if you could, please step to the podium. If you signed up to speak, your comments will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name and your address and please be respectful of the board, the staff members that are present, and the audience. And finally, please refrain from discussing any individual personnel matters. Thank you.
Good evening, our first speaker and only speaker, Ms. Helen Steinbach. She bypassed, all right?
Oh, no, she, you tried to, because when she came in, the list was not out there for her to sign up. The young lady, what's your name, hon? Ms. Elizabeth, you had the sheet.
I, I get out there and they can even hear the door, so.
Oh. Oh, okay, so you want to sign up to speak? Okay, who's on, who'd you call, Helen Steinbach, Trustee Taylor?
No, she, she's passing her time.
Oh, you passed, oh, okay, okay then. Yeah, you could go to the podium. Oh, you declined, Helen?
Reserving her time.
Huh?
She's reserving her time.
Oh, she, oh, okay.
You need me to sign?
No, you can speak, can you hear, is your speaker on? Still on green? Yes.
My name's Elizabeth.
Your name, yeah, okay.
Elizabeth Trinidad, I reside at 49th 101 Walsh Avenue in East Chicago. I am here with a lot of concerns when it comes down to the school district. I'm a mother of three with two still in school, one in middle school, special education, one in McKinley School. I have never dealt with so much in the, what, two months that they've been in school when it comes to the special education department. I have had to go through so much in less than two months that I have had in all the years that my child's been in school, which is sad to me. And to my knowledge, I'm not the only parent that's going through this. First and foremost, school started, if I'm not mistaken, August 12th, am I correct? My son's class has been without a teacher for almost a month and a half. This is a special education class. To this moment, they don't even know where they stand. They don't, they can't find a teacher. I remember three years ago, I stood here, the same predicament. It was worse three years ago when they didn't have no teachers, they didn't have no paras, but they made it work somehow, some way. So explain to me, how is it that it's so hard to find a teacher to cover that classroom? When back then, you guys needed more than one teacher and you guys made it work. They made it work, somehow, some way, they made it work. But yet again, they don't know what to do when it comes to this. They reached out to everybody that they could possibly reach out to to come out, retired teachers, teachers from different schools, colleges. They can't find one teacher to teach this class. All because you have an irresponsible teacher that decides to intentionally do things to cause a child to react so you could go on medical leave. That doesn't sit right with me. It didn't sit right with me when my son got suspended. They suspended my son twice without communicating it to me and thinking that a text is gonna be like, for your information, your child is getting suspended. I have a dean that called me for one of the suspensions, didn't know what he was talking about because he did not even have the information correctly, which he then eventually apologized and, and the communication between me and him was fine after that. I don't trust the teacher that's in that, or that was in that classroom because she's still not back. We don't know where we stand. I'm told, well, we got, I don't know what to do. What I could do is, we could, we could, in your son's case, we got three options. We could send him to the high school with high school students. That's not happening in my book. That's not an option for my child. Well, at least not for mine's. I can only speak for mine. You're not gonna put him in, back in elementary school with a teacher that I already had a disagreement with when he was in elementary school. That's not what we're gonna do. And the third thing you're not gonna do is think you're gonna send my child or ask me to put my child in home bound for five hours a week when it's six hours a day that he's in school and he's not even getting the academics now. So what makes you think five hours a week is gonna have my son? Well, my son's gonna learn anything in five hours. He's not getting none of his services, none in school, none. They put him in front of a laptop or a computer six hours a day. You got the worst paras in that classroom ever. You guys want to see proof? I have it all right here. You want to see how my son comes home, was coming home from the second day of school? This is how my son was coming home. Wet, soiled, in his poop, his shoes on the wrong feet, untied. His clothes, his underwear's inside out, his pants backwards. And I addressed all this. And all they tell me is, we're gonna do better, we're gonna do better. Another thing that don't sit right with me, there's no reason that if I go up to school because I need to speak to someone regardless of what it's for, which is obviously is gonna be for my child or whatever the case might be, I should not have to call, make an appointment to speak about something that's important to me when it comes to my child. I shall not, I can, I should not be excluded from coming into the classroom, or not so much the classroom, into even the office for whatever reason. I don't need to make an appointment. You have my child in that classroom, in that school. I send my son to school to learn. He has an IEP that's not being followed whatsoever. Got an evaluation recently, guess what? His teacher is so petty, since she's on medical leave, she decides she doesn't want to fill out the paperwork. So her input on my son, which she has had during that timeframe, it's not even on his IEP evaluation. I don't think that's fair whatsoever. I shouldn't have to reach out, they should never have to reach out to another teacher to come to the school to cover that classroom and leave her classroom, that's special education as well. It makes no sense to me. And I'm not the only parent, that a lot of parents probably don't come up here because they're probably scared or doesn't, don't speak the language. I'm more than willing to advocate for all your kids. But at the end of the day, East Chicago needs to do better, way better. Because I was born and raised here, I went to every single, I went to McKinley, I went to Westside, and I graduated from Central. And you would think I would want the same for my kids. And let me tell you something. I really don't want my kids even in the system when it comes to East Chicago. That's how bad. And I could say McKinley's great to my daughter, but when it came to Lincoln and elementary for my son with disability, they're terrible. I have paras that think that, and I don't even know the paras. To this day, I still don't even know who's dealing with my children because they don't allow us in the classroom. They don't even present them to us so we could learn them and they could learn us. There's a lot that you guys have to look into. I don't understand how you guys are allowing, or how the district is allowing people to write IEPs and they're not even licensed for it. I don't understand that. There's no way, meaning, you don't know how many years back, y'all, how, how many years back it's been happening. Parents don't know. We, as parents, sent our kids to school trusting in the school district. And it's sad, it's extremely, extremely sad that I have to sit up here. I look at my son every day and be like, I am so sorry that you have to go through this. If they send my son home like the way they've been sending him home or they were sending him home, and wet, just wet, he's wet, he's peed, he's pooped, clothes inside out, underwear's inside out, shoes on the wrong feet. Like I told them the day after, when I had meetings with them, because I've had more than three or four meetings with them at the school, I could just imagine what happens to the kids that are really nonverbal and that are in wheelchairs and they can't speak for themselves. How do you send them home? Because obviously, you don't send mines, right? I have so many text messages, so many emails and all that, and everything is so secretive with block. Very, very secretive, and that doesn't sit right with me at all.
Thank you, Ms. Trinidad.
I'm gonna talk with you when you, when the meeting over, thank you. Does there any more? Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Taylor.
No, we don't have anyone else.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to our, go to our trustee remark, trustee Taylor.
Good evening. I just want to address really quickly, Ms. Trinidad. I know that Madam President will be speaking with you after the meeting to address your concerns. Also, I just want to address, again, if, if I ever vote something, on something that's contrary to what the rest of the board voted on, I want you to know where I'm coming from. And as it relates to the strategic plan, I am a strong advocate for it. I'm a strong supporter of the strategic plan. I actually had the privilege of serving on the committee and I helped kind of shape it as well. So I really wanted to succeed as it is the roadmap of the district moving forward. However, at this time, I do have a duty to be fiscally responsible. So with the current financial challenges at both the state and district levels, I'm just being really careful and really cautious, considering each vote, to ensure that we, just being both responsible and, and, and being great stewards or good stewards over our finances. So for that reason is why I voted no on the, the program that was going to assess or evaluate the strategic plan. That's all I have. Good evening, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Taylor. Trustee Rodriguez?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President, good evening. On November 5th, 2025 is a date that marks another routine meeting of the State Board of Education. Yet the item discussed under the chair's statement demands anything but a routine acceptance. But let me be clear, my purpose in speaking is not to attack, but to inject a necessary note of skepticism and caution regarding the recent moves by the Indiana Department of Education, IDOE, under their leadership. First, let me, let us discuss the application for the waiver of the United States Department of Education submitted on October 17th. We lack essential details. While we assure that the US DOE staff is working on it despite the government shutdown and that IDOE is in communication, as they stated, the most critical information is missing. What exactly is in this waiver? This board, meaning the IDOE board and the public it serves, deserves to know which provisions of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act is asking to be exempt from. Are these high-stake accountability measures? Are they reporting requirements? Are they funding mandates? Those are questions that I submitted in October and have not received an answer yet. I requested, a request for a federal waiver is a significant action that impacts every district, teacher, students, in Indiana. Simply stating, it only requests waivers of provisions of ESEA but not IDEA, which is insufficient. We must, we must be proactive, not reactive. We must see the full submission now, debate its merits, and understand the potential consequences before the US DOE acts on it in 116 days. Next, we heard about the awards for the three pilot, the three pilots concerning innovation for the use of facilities and transportation. Innovation is a positive concept, but in this context of persistence, fundamental challenges such as teacher shortages, stagnant test scores in certain demographics, and school funding disparities, as I heard today. These small three schools pilots cannot, can be perceived as low-impact window dressing. I'm not sold. Are these pilots addressing the structural inadequacies in how we fund maintenance and transportation across our state? Or are they minor isolated experiments? We need assurance that the department is focusing on its primary energy on systemic solutions to our largest educational crisis, not pilots. And finally, the announcement of the Indiana Blue Ribbon, Blue School, or, I'm sorry, Blue Ribbon Schools and the upcoming Purple Star Schools. Now here's my definition of that. The Indiana Blue Ribbon Schools designation is a state's continuation of a program that was formerly federally funded. The award is designed to recognize and celebrate schools that demonstrate exemplary academic performance and innovative approach on education. While recognizing is a moral booster, we must act. Are we state-run programs following the federal cuts and the rigorous benchmarks for success? Or is this simply awards? The department, energy spent on running these recognition programs must be detract from its essential work of improving the struggling schools that we, that would never make this list. I just want to say that the chair reports outline activity, the filing of the waiver of awards of pilots, and the announcement of award schools is not adequate for me, given that I live in an area which does not, will not be part of this list from the Department of Education. But actively does, but actively not adequate to progress and in the absence of detail, it breeds suspicion. I urge the DOE board. I urge the DOE board to demand immediate and complete transparency on the federal waiver and to ensure that the focus remains fixed on the systemic challenges facing all 1.2 million Indiana students rather than a small number headlining, grabbing initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Because Dr. Renee's not here. Well, I'm gonna speak here. Some good news here that we have, some of our students that have received a scholarship. I'm gonna try to pronounce their names, as several of our students have not, have received the scholarship. And the name is Christopher Chaverrera. Uh, was admitted with a $2,000 merit-based scholarship. We have Annette Hernandez was admitted, Pedro Salaro, O'Nealius admitted, Jennifer Mongol admitted, Jessica Caballera admitted with a $2,000 merit-based scholarship, Lamont Anderson Jr. admitted with the $1,000 merit-based scholarship, and Shania Taylor admitted. We have Arellia Gibson admitted, Jemaya Ivory admitted, Jasmine Lott admitted with a $2,000 merit-based scholarship, and Jamarra Smith admitted with a $15,000 ma- merit-based scholarship. Jordi Ardeus admitted with a $15,000 ma- merit-based scholarship. And we have four students that have also applied for Ivy Techs. So can we give an applause for these students with their scholarships? Dr. Renee, do you want to say anything?
Just that we want to pause. Just like we want to pause to recognize all those who are veterans. Tomorrow, we will be observing Veterans Day in all schools, and offices will be closed in that remembrance. And that we are also reminding everyone, thank you for your patience and flexibility today as we had our first snow for the season. And we are, do have a scheduled hybrid e-learning day for Wednesday.
Thank you. Now, I want to expound on, um, I'm gonna expound on our, the, our personnel report. I want to give, uh, my reasons for some things that have happened, um, my voting that I've been on this board for going on, it's three years. But I want to say to my trustee Taylor and trustee Rodriguez, they were, did an extraordinary job of being on our strategic planning. They were appointed by me, the board president, and I did trust him, their values and their input from the board, and they did an excellent job. I also want to say that, um, since we didn't have our district finance person here today, do have something showing that we are in the red. I know that it was a month, September, if I'm not mistaken, going into October. School board meeting said that we were in the black, but that's not so. I'm looking now that we are in the red with Title I, Title II, and Title IV. We're also, special, special ed grants, uh, they are in the red. Okay. Uh, I want to expound on meeting that we had November the 1st, dealing with our titles. Those that were present, those were, were listening out, as, as I call it, TV land, which I hope they're listening today. We didn't get any answers on that day either. We, uh, there was some documentation from what I had and the board had that the title was turned in October the 29th, but nothing has been approved as I speak. There was a meeting also, November the 5th. We did have the individual present that spoke about the titles. And, um, from some of the notes that I have here, uh, from, from the conversation, there was, um, erase, the, the process application was erased. And then there was, um, absentee, absent from the individuals, um, unexcused, um, absent with no reasons for, to the board. But we just had heard about all this stuff November, I mean, November the 5th. There was a lot of stuff that we finally did hear concerning our title dollars. And as I speak right now, we still don't have any of our title dollars as I speak. So, uh, this is something, like I said, this is something that's very important to us as a board because we are over the finance, and I'm going to be speaking about this until we do receive these title dollars so that we can go ahead and move forward on doing some, some, taking care of some board business. It's which we, it's which, what we are to do. So I just want to, um, make myself very clear as to why I be, why I vote on certain things that does not pertain, and it, and it affects our children. All what we do affects our children. Pardon? We don't have, oh, okay. Well, you want to get up to the podium, Ms., I want to hear about that, Ms. Helen. You know what I'm saying? Like I say, don't be quite a church mouse now, as we say in the community now. Yes, go ahead.
So because you and, um, trustee Gomez voted no on the personnel report, none of those hirings can go through.
We don't have any money. Did you just what I said?
I understand, but we also don't have teachers in the classroom, and we won't have basketball coaches on the...
Well, hopefully, we'll get to that, we'll get down to that right now, okay? But I'm looking at something that's very critical here. And it's been critical, it ain't just got started.
Okay. I, I understand, and some of the things I do agree with you, but as far as the personnel report, I'm not quite sure.
That will be addressed, okay? It will be addressed.
I'm sorry, Madam President. Did you say you were voting no on the personnel report because we don't have any funds? Are you talking...
No, I'm looking at, uh, let me make myself clear. I'm looking at what I have right here. That's what I'm saying.
I'm just clarifying that the number of positions that you are not approving, they weren't all paid from title funds. Some of them are paid from education.
I don't know, I'm just only looking at what I have here.
And operations.
Dr. Renee, that's all I could do.
I see. So I, you were trying to get understanding.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Because whatever you're trying to say, say right now, you know, it's not been explained. I just only can explain what I have, what they have given to me and what I see. That's all I could do. So Madam, uh, so we'd like to, uh, you'd like to sound on anything? Mr. Harris?
No, you just need a motion to adjourn.
Yes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Have we, have we discussed our next board meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm so sorry, Joelle. You, you said that right. I'm sorry. So our next board meeting, uh, will be, it would be November the 25th, and it would be at Lincoln Elementary School. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, make a motion to adjourn?
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes.